Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome you to this Wednesday, September 26th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those who are willing and able, I would invite you to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank you and praise you for your love, mercy, and grace. As we gather here this evening and draw to a close this fiscal year, we ask for your guidance and direction to begin a new year filled with hope and opportunity. Thank you for our leaders and the opportunity to serve the citizens of this great community we call home. God, please help us in the matters presented before us tonight to be responsible stewards of all of the resources that you have entrusted in us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got three modifications. Item 9.03 has been deleted. Items 1102 and 1305 have been added to your materials.
Excellent. We're now in the portion of the meeting where we will hear from speakers on agended items. We do have 30 minutes allocated for this section, and each speaker, we will be permitted three minutes. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we do have speakers tonight. The first speaker is Max Hurley on item 12-2, Introduction of Ordinance 18029 Concerning Bar Hours. I'll remind speakers, as the mayor pointed out, this portion of our meeting will take speakers on items that are on our agenda. There will be an opportunity at the very end of the meeting for speakers who wish to talk about something that is not agended for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Max Hurley, 117 South Gadsden Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Tallahassee Bar and Hospitality Association. We have 33 members throughout Tallahassee that help provide our vibrant nightlife. As we are all aware, this issue has been controversial at times, even between industry members. But tonight, I'm happy to report that we have a tremendous breakthrough in some of the negotiations between nightclubs and bars in town. Yesterday, Scott Carswell, the owner of The Moon, and I signed a joint letter that we believe has some good compromise in it, and among those are that we fully support the ordinance, including reducing bar hours from 4:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. We fully support the increasing penalties for noncompliance of 35A, which moves the fee from $500 to $1,000. However, we are seeking a slight language modification on Page 1, lines 26 to Page 2, line 1. We're looking to strike the words "or permit consumption," which we believe will put our security personnel in the difficult spot of enforcing this ordinance, and we believe it will create confrontation between patrons and security staff for the patrons who have not yet finished their drink before leaving the establishment. We do support this ordinance, and we thank you for bringing it forward with this slight language modification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, just because I'm curious. Is there any way we could get a list of who those 30 bars are? Perhaps you could provide that. Maybe not now, but to the city treasurer clerk.
Thank you for the question, Commissioners Ziffer. It's actually in our bylaws that we don't publicly broadcast our members.
Next speaker.
The next speaker on the same item is Scott Carswell. He will be followed by Amber Tynan.
Good day, and thank you for your time. First, I want to agree with Max that I do support the ordinance that says it's been rewritten with the one change. The consumption, I think, when it came up in the summer of '16, the language was put in, was in the comments that were made. I think it was just in passing. I hope it was, because the most lawsuits I've ever settled over 34 years, the vast majority are when we move things on our property while patrons are still in the building. It's impossible to go out into that room and start cleaning up everything in it. If you say consumption must cease, then you've got to pick up everything in the building and get it in the garbage can, and then that's a major liability issue. So if we're ending the bar sales at 2:00, which I think everybody's in agreement on for the status quo, if we're keeping that, then we need to be allowed time to exit the building properly. I think our own staff police department would have an issue if we tried to do it. On that note, we operated for all of our time at 2:30 for 34 years. We pretty much are done at 2:30 with the biggest place in town, so we can get it done. Since this was, or this was passed two years ago, we have had a few nights, maybe 10 a year, where we have gone past 2:30 into the 2:40, 2:50 zone. So it has been somewhat of a help on the larger nights to not be pushed out at 2:30 with a larger crowd. So I support the 3:00. I think that's fair for everyone, and I think it gives us plenty of time to get people out. It lets people exit comfortably, and the parking lot's clear. So I think the status quo, as was mentioned with that one edit, which I think would be an impossible task to accomplish, to sell a drink at 1:59 and then clear them all out of the building at 2:00. I think we just need to let the patrons exit, and then we clean out the property. And again, I thank you for your time and sorry that this has become such an issue between everyone, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Amber Tynan, speaking on item 1306, CHSP Funding.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm representing United Partners for Human Services. We are a member organization for around 85 human service nonprofits and allies that has had a longstanding collaborative relationship with both the city and the county, and we are speaking in support of 1306 today. Thank you so much for your consideration of this. As you know, this process has been a little bit different this year with the disengagement of the United Way. Having gone through the process last year intact with the three largest funders, our agencies received about a 38% cut, and without making them whole to last year's funding levels, they're going to have even larger deficits. So what usually happens when nonprofits do receive cuts, whether it be through grants or just general funding, is they have to make a decision whether or not to cut services, cut staff, or to find other resources. And unfortunately, a lot of our nonprofits here, despite the efforts to increase and enhance their capacity, they don't have the ability to do that. And what's going to happen is that's going to have 41-plus percent of those that are struggling day in and day out having less access to services. So again, your support now and since the inception of CHSP is just something that we truly commend. Thank you so much. We look forward to the continued partnership. We want to thank Michael, Pat, and their team from the human services side for helping us through this transitional year, and we are looking forward to the needs assessment and how that can help us really streamline some of the outcomes and performance measures and help us really coordinate care to make bigger impact here in Tallahassee. So thank you so much in advance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, next speaker is Amy Hecht and Angela Chong. I'm not sure if they are going to squeeze both of them into three minutes or each take their own three minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Amy Hecht. I serve as the Vice President for Student Affairs at Florida State University, and I'm here to speak in support of the alcohol ordinance as is. Florida State University is very proud that we have moved up to the top 26 of state institutions. And as we seek to move even further in the ranks, our reputation is something that is coming into play, in particular, our reputation as a party school. We have also been moving quite a bit in terms of our health and wellness and the environmental management. We see very poor decisions being made by young people, and in some ways, our environment is supporting poor decisions. And so we have been taking steps both on campus, and we're hoping to do that with off-campus and with your support of this ordinance so that we can create an environment in which our students are able to make better decisions. We have also hired an associate vice president, Angela Chong, of Health and Wellness, who is helping us move these initiatives on our campus. That will give some more information.
Thank you. We know from national data that alcohol abuse remains a factor in behaviors reported by college students across this country, such as being sexually assaulted and sexually assaulting someone, physical injury, academic or other misconduct, and is a contributing factor, sadly, to the consideration of death by suicide. We also know that the most effective strategies for addressing alcohol misuse and substance abuse disorders involve prevention, education, treatment, enforcement, and also means restriction, including reduction in access to alcohol in high-risk environments such as bars. The city of Gainesville, I want to note, has adopted legislative statutes that limit access to bars by those under 21 and enforce a 2:00 a.m. hard closing time. As a result, they've seen a decrease in underage drinking, decrease in costs associated with police resources, and no demonstrable impact on city businesses or an uptick in behavior in other areas such as neighborhoods or our residence halls. We very much look forward to discussing these opportunities at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chief David Perry, also on this same item. He'll be followed by Dan Gilbertson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Gillum. Commissioners, Risco, congratulations. I too am representing Florida State University as the Assistant Vice President for Safety and Chief of Police, and seeing is believing. Seeing is believing when you go out and conduct ride-alongs, as I have with some of the city leaders here, and observing some of the reprehensible behavior that is ongoing that's impacting some of our city buildings, some of our businesses, and even some of our places of worship. So we are in strong support of this ordinance passing as is. There's also some other unintended consequences that we see on our campus as it relates to Marchman Acts, seeing our students in very bad conditions, very poor conditions, unable to take care of themselves, and increased propensity for victimization of crimes as some of our college-age students are unable to be aware of their surroundings and be ready to protect themselves or be aware of their surroundings. Victimization is an unintended consequence, as well as DUI, accidents, personal injury, and overall a negative perception of some of our fine students that are doing well at the university. So we believe that this ordinance should remain as is, and we support it in its current state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Gilbertson, also on item 1202. He'll be followed by V. Miller, and that's the last speaker form I have at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Dan Gilbertson. I'm trying to make this brief with it, but there's, effectively, if you set it 2:00, you're effectively setting the time clock back to have bars close and alcohol stop serving sooner. So if you do pass that, you're effectively saying, we need to change how it has been for 40 years and say, we need to close earlier. Now, obviously, alcohol does have a lot of impact, and there are some bad decisions out there, but correctly run establishments actually help in that, having good practices. And by doing this, you're actually going to create a very, by having it 2:00 and also setting it where drinks have to be out with the consumption aspect, you're creating a more bad decision situation. You're creating, like they said before, a staff impractical way for us to meet that. If you have it to 2:00 and you have a bunch of people in there, you're not going to be able to get everybody's drink. And if they say no, as our staff can be instructed, I think we can ask the police department, are we allowed to take their drinks? What if they say no? Do we have to forcefully take it out? There's a lot of impracticalities of that and a lot of practicalities for, given us that time, to give us the time to turn the lights on, allow them to get out, not force them out, not create a hostile environment at the end of the night. It's a really flow to the practicality of how that works. Now, you know, I can't sit here and argue when they're going to bring up statistics of the dangers. That is out there, but I plead to you that the bars are not the cause here. We're not the enemy to people, and if you believe in that and you want to say we shouldn't have alcohol in our community, that's one thing. But if you're going to set laws just because we're going to say, here's problems over here, and therefore, this law makes sense, you have to have some connectivity. So I say, in this situation, let's be practical. The practical situation, you have two things. You have alcohol establishments, bars, and restaurants that are closing at 2:00 to expect to be able to get drinks out. Let's say we have a music out there, and we have a band playing, and there's an encore. Are we going to go through the crowd, turn the lights on, have to pull it away so you couldn't hear that last song by the band that everybody wants to hear? There's some real practicality that doesn't make sense. Now, you have a restaurant side, which is what this whole issue kind of came up about. The reason the 3:00 came about and from the 2:30, 3:00 was saying, well, if the law on this was tied to also the restaurants. So if you have a business that also serves the people that are leaving the establishments, and they come to your place of business, they order a drink maybe before 2:00, or even they come and order food, if you set 2:00 and they have to be out, you're not giving that business the ability to provide that service to people to eat between the 2:00 and 3:00. Nobody here is going to argue from that 4:00. Nobody needs that. Nobody wants to, I think everyone's fine, as you heard from other people, the 3:00 makes sense, but 2:30 worked. The 3:00 is more practical, did give people out, and I believe the statistics for calls for service actually went down, so the statistics actually show that it worked. I would just plead to you to understand that I think you're going to open up a lot more situations in unpracticality and asking bars that's going to fail. You're giving us a ability to say that we can control everybody's behavior. At the end of the night, they're going to comply with it. You're kind of asking a lot of our staff to be able to do that. So you're effectively, might as well just change the time earlier if that's what this is about, and I don't think that's what this is about because there's...
Excuse me, you're at 3:00 minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, V. Miller, on item 1307, Expansion of Replacement Generator Project.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. As the card says, my name is V. Miller. I'm the Campaign Director at Rethink Energy Florida. I'm here before you today because about a week ago, we received word from the city utility staff about their intention to purchase an additional 18-megawatt natural gas generator. Since then, representatives from the utility have made the case for the purchase of the 18-megawatt generator. We understand the utility's intention to reduce costs and ensure reliability and appreciate their outreach to us prior to the commission meeting. However, the timing and nature of the utility's communication about the intended purchase gives our constituents a sense of fait accompli. We want to know more about how this decision was made and about its place in the still-developing Clean Energy Plan. We expected to see the draft of the Clean Energy Plan in August, and we still have many questions to ask which have not been answered, including the reason for its delay. We recognize that a comprehensive and equitable climate, comprehensive and equitable community-wide transition requires that we all work together in new ways. Late yesterday afternoon, city utility staff offered us a meeting to discuss the Anfront Report. We are very happy to accept and request that this meeting happen as soon as the appropriate parties can be gathered. In said meeting, we would also like to cover the process by which the city utility makes decisions and communicates them to the public, such as the decision to purchase the 18-megawatt gas generator, as we believe that much can be resolved and progress resumed, much can be resolved and progress resumed with greater transparency and communication from the city utility's part. In conclusion, we henceforth ask for a greater degree of cooperation and transparency from the city utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That's the last speaker we have at this portion. I'll remind audience members that there will be an unagended speaker portion at the end of the meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, Treasurer Clerk, and to all of you who offered their respective comments this afternoon. Commissioners, we're now on to the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're on to City Commission Items, 1101. This will be the ratification of appointments to the Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11.02, the City Manager Employment Contract. Ms. Jackson. There's a motion and a second. Anything for the record?
Certainly. As you know, you were directing me on September 17th to negotiate a contract with the city manager. I did that. The terms are the same essential terms or standard terms that are in all the other appointed officials' contracts, and I present it to you for approval.
Right. There is a motion and a second for approval. Just want to say, congratulations again, Mr. Goode. We are pleased to have you as our permanent city manager, and we'll go ahead and take the vote on the contract. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. So the Commissioners, we're now on to Introduction of Ordinance as item 12.01.
Thank you. So item number 12.01 is the Introduction of Ordinance Number 18-0-17. It is an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Sections 12-62 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to public safety on roads and medians, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. The next item is item 12.02, which is an introduction of ordinance number 18-0-29, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending alcoholic beverages code in the Code of General Ordinances, revising Section 3-5 to amend closing hours and hours of service and consumption at alcoholic beverage establishments, providing for increased penalties for violations, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Item number 12.03, ordinance number 18...
Madam Attorney, just a quick question on the last ordinance. Commissioner Ritz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Jackson, if we were to amend this ordinance to extend the, to remove the wording concerning consumption, what would be the process for that between now and the next public hearing?
What we would do is simply change, redraft the ordinance and add an amendment next to it, and then it would continue to be set for public hearing on the 17th.
Okay.
So if that would be the will of the commission, then I would do that. I would make that change.
So this would be the time if there would be any changes to indicate those?
Okay. I do have a question, though, if anyone can answer it for me. So we're saying that consumption then would be allowed until 3:00?
Yes.
But what's to say that if somebody has a beer in their hand at 2:59, that it just, it can't be taken? I'm not quite understanding that, and theoretically, that could happen. They could still have a drink at 2:59 or 3:00.
You have to leave.
Max, you want to take a stab at that, if you would? Mr. Mayor, can we...
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. So under the current status quo, that sort of situation has always been the case, that it allows patrons to finish their drinks. So we really regulate two things, last call, which is 3:04, and then the bar hours or occupancy within an establishment. We've never actually contemplated consumption in city ordinance.
Commissioner Ritz.
Okay. So just a couple of things. The first thing is, I have a specific reason why I want to know your members. You said you have 30 members. I don't know how many bars and restaurants are in Tallahassee, but I would guess the numbers in hundreds, which means there are a whole lot that aren't even interested in this because they're not participating in this process. So I'm just curious because I'd like to have a conversation with some of your members to see what their thinking is, and if it's in your bylaws, that's fine, but perhaps I can have a conversation with one of your officers and see if maybe I could get a list. That'd be great. See, you're nodding your head, so I mean, I guess that means correct. The other thing is, and I, wherever Dan went to, I understand your argument, except for cities, towns, and villages all over this state are having issues that you described, and that is, when the time comes, the time comes, and people have to leave, or people can't drink anymore. And I know that you may be hardship here in Tallahassee, but other places around the state are finding a way to make it happen. I'm willing to make a suggestion because it is a compromise, and that is, I appreciate and I understand the whole concept of somebody buying a drink at 1:59 and having a yank from them and how difficult that is. So my suggested compromise is the following: No alcohol sales after 2:00 a.m., which is what it is currently, but they can continue to drink that until 2:30, but the bar closes at 2:30. So you've got a half an hour to finish your drink, but also clears out. So it's kind of like giving the consumption till 2:30, but taking back the time from 3:00 to 2:30. That would be more of a compromise in my mind because that way, we're able to get people to their next destination quicker instead of till 3:00, and yet it gives them that latitude to finish off whatever that drink is. My concern is, is if we give that whole hour, then numerous drinks will be purchased at 1:59 to be finished over that period of 60 minutes. When you only have 30 minutes to finish your drink, you might only have one. That's my concern. So that would be my suggestion. I'll make that into a motion, see if anybody wants to follow up, but it would be to change consumption till 2:30, and the bar closes at 2:30. Last drink is served at 2:00 a.m.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second, thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
I was originally in favor of an overall closing time of 2:30. I'm okay with 3:00 now because it was a compromise from everybody involved. The consumption issue makes sense to me that, I don't know how you police consumption other than just tell people to close the bar, right? I think your point is to close the bar, and I completely understand that because I don't think it's practical to be able to police dumping out everybody's drink after they buy it. Between now and when this comes back, I'd like to hear from the police department because I feel wholly unqualified to make this decision because I can't stay up past 10:00 p.m. So this is all foreign to me. So I don't really know, I mean, who is it that's at 2:00 a.m. buying a whole bunch of drinks and then going over there and drinking them for an hour? Are they college students? Because when I was in college, I couldn't afford a whole bunch of drinks. So, I mean, are they, I need some impact, some input from the police department as to, is this a problem? Are we seeing binge drinking right before closing time? Is there another way to address this? It was clear to me when it was 4:00 a.m. that, I don't know why in the world anybody would need to be in a bar at 4:00 a.m. We fought that battle here, and I was solidly against that. So between now and when it comes back, I'd like to get some stats from the police department.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, also, with that, if the chief and the department could let us, because part of the discussion when this came up was, rather than forcing everybody on the street at 2:00 a.m., the extended hours would kind of stagger the times that people left the bar. So everybody wasn't, so if the department could let us know if that is an issue for them, because at one time, we were pushing everybody out at 2:00. There was no consideration of any, you know, time to sit and sober up or to eat. It was, you're out of there at 2:00. So if you all could include that in the information that you bring back to us, you know, concerning the impact of either having everybody leave at 2:00, 2:30, or having that one-hour window of time when people can kind of, because I'm like Scott, I don't stay up past 10:00 myself, so it's certainly not an issue for me. But I would like to know from you all's perspective if you think it would be an issue. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I can comment on that. Commissioners, we will prepare some analysis and include it in your agenda material. You'll get that before the meeting so that can help you deliberate on this matter. And I know some of the information that the chief has already started to compile is in terms of arrests and activities related to these hours, and so we're putting that together. We'll certainly be happy to provide that to all of you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think we are still proceeding with the introduction of the ordinance as it is.
And I didn't notice if you showed that 12.01 was introduced.
No, just, well, I was going to acknowledge complete introduction.
At the end. The next item is 12...
Commissioner, one second. Sorry, Madam Attorney.
I'm going to float this motion just for discussion purposes, so we have it to consider when this comes back. I would move that we do amend the ordinance to take out the language concerning consumption just for discussion purposes when it's brought back to us at the October 17 meeting.
I would second that, but I don't really, I'm not clear about, I see how that would open the discussion now, but I'm not clear about how that carries over to the next meeting.
Well, we don't, we're not taking, Mr. Mayor, if I could, we're not taking action. Today, we're just introducing. So that way, the city attorney could have two prepared...
Essentially, yes. That's what it would do. Thank you, Commissioner.
So there's a second on that motion to prepare two forms of this ordinance to include the edit that Commissioner Richardson indicated in the original form.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maddox.
If you've got a motion and a second, you need to vote on it.
That's right. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes four to one.
The next item is 12.03. It is an... It is an introduction of ordinance number 18-0-30, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 1-7, general penalty continuing violations in the Code of General Ordinances to include a monetary fine where a fine has not otherwise been specifically provided, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. The next item is 12.04. It is introduction of ordinance number 18-0-33, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Sections 14.3.317 and 14-3.335 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to police employees' pension provisions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provide an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Great. Commissioners, having heard those ordinances introduced, are there any objections? Seeing none, show the ordinances introduced.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Ziffer.
I know this is probably not the right part of the meeting, but I'm going to ask, and please let me continue if you wouldn't mind because I'm not sure how long they're staying. We have members of leadership, current leadership Tallahassee class with us, and I just want to recognize them. Can you raise your hand? Thank you for coming. I particularly want to point out one individual that's very important for cities, and that is Jeannie Garner, who was recognized and appointed this past weekend as executive director designate. She'll be leading the Florida League of Cities, all 412 cities, in about two years. So congratulations, Ms. Garner.
I think this whole diocese are full of leadership Tallahassee graduates, and in order to get your recognition for attendance at this meeting, you've got to stay the whole time. I think that's the, I think those were the instructions when I was there. I'm sure they continued, but welcome, y'all, and thank you for your service to the community. Commissioners, we're now at policy and formation, item 13.01, city manager.
Move approval of the audit work plan?
Second.
I wish you the very best, Joe. It's a very aggressive plan. We've had an opportunity to review it, and that's the beauty of new energy. A lot of excitement and high goals, so good luck with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm certainly looking forward to working with Mr. Malachewski. I agree. It's a long list. I think we'll be better for it, and so certainly want to pledge my support in anything I can do to help you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Ramiler.
Could I comment? I have had a long discussion with our auditor and also our previous two auditors, and there are a couple of things that I wanted to expound upon in relating to our conversation. One of those that I actually asked for Fletcher to send a message, an email, to each commission office when an audit was going to be delivered. And in these audits, I know y'all have all looked at them, but on the front page, there's a real summary of the findings and the actions that are recommended and so on and so forth. And I just want to encourage everybody to take the time to look at those things. You know, I had a lot of questions about various things. He can tell you, he was in there forever and probably ready to get out of there by the time we finished talking. But, you know, he's really spotted some interesting avenues of inquiry, and I think that you all will see a lot of organizational recommendations about those various areas coming out from the audits, and so I encourage you to read them in detail. And I also asked him, I said, and I was just really saying what I would want. And if there's any high-profile audit, like our CDA audit, I think in the past, our auditors come in and briefed us each on those things, and anything like that, that he probably should bring to our attention and opportunity for you all to actually sit down in his audit. Because there are a lot of things that they find during audits that they don't put in the audit, you know, that they discover new avenues of inquiry for later. And I think that those are things that everybody would be well positioned to look, to have access to that discussion with him.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second to approve the audit work plan. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.02.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, there's been significant increase in the amount of public and private investment along our South Monroe Street corridor. As a result of this increased activity and focus on our south side, you directed staff to work with the Florida Department of Transportation to develop a complete street strategy for this important gateway. The complete street strategy can be integrated into upcoming resurfacing projects as we've done in other areas, as we integrate our approach, whether it's in construction, or in this case, for the development, and as I said, new development, redevelopment projects. We wanted to take a moment before we end our year and give you an update on our Complete Streets effort, and I think this dovetails nicely into a conversation we've been having about the area as well as future agenda items. Cherie Bryan is here to give us a brief presentation.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I am very happy to bring forward this update. It represents a couple of years of work with DOT and some big progress, actually, not just for the city, but for the state. Starting with looking at where we are with South Monroe. It is currently a fairly suburban-designed roadway with, just from the width of the lanes, the lack of, or the very narrow bike lanes and sidewalks, and absence of street trees. But the corridor is in the very middle of our, of what is currently an urban context and is becoming a more urban context and a more walkable, it has the potential to be a very walkable area based on the uses and some of the interests that we're seeing as far as redevelopment coming forward. There are several factors that are leading to more reinvestment in the area. You see here with Carepoint, the juxtaposition of both the old and the new. There is, through the investments in Gaines Street and Cascades Park and FAMU Way, you're starting to see activity, just as you saw on Gaines Street. That public investment is then one of the triggers for some increasing private reinvestment in the area. The, there's also more of an interest overall, just locally and nationally, for that more urban, in-town activity and living. So you see in South Monroe, in both the large projects, such as Carepoint, private sector large projects, as well as the small details, an increasing ownership in the South Monroe area. Design Works, which is the design studio within the Planning Department, keeps, started over the past couple of years to keep a heat map, just a point for every time someone calls and asks or works with us on a project. It may or may not come to fruition, but we do keep track of it and started mapping it. And you can see here, a lot of, so how much interest is in this, how Gaines Street activity. You can see that that same interest is starting to move down towards Orange Avenue. So what I'd like to do is just, as I'm talking about our steps implementing the Complete Streets, look at a couple of specific examples that have to be considered when redevelopment occurs, and then talk about how the Complete Streets strategies that we've worked with DOT play in.
Before you move on, could you tell us what these little dots mean?
Well, the various colors mean different things. Some of them mean there was a pre-application, which was a formal pre-application. Some of it's just a consultation where somebody called or walked in to talk with us. Some of them might be formal site plans, so the various colors. And actually, there's more under there. They kind of started overlaying on top of each other, but that's what the different colors mean. Carepoint is one of the examples that's already on the ground. I showed you a construction image earlier. This is how it looks now, this morning, as a matter of fact. It's, you saw there virtually a total redevelopment of the site, which allowed for a true implementation of the Multimodal District Code as it was written. So you can see the wide sidewalks, the buffer, pedestrian buffer with the planted trees. That took a lot of coordination with DOT. There's underground utilities, working through the right-of-way issues. But it came, and especially if you imagine as those trees grow in, it becomes a very, it becomes a truly urban fabric, which is very different from what we saw in my first image of South Monroe Street. What I want to draw your attention to here as we go into the Complete Street strategy is that separation there with the trees. That's critical, especially when you think about walking on a sidewalk of 40, you know, 45, 50 mile-an-hour traffic going by you. Having that separation is critical. What, we're on the, just around the corner, this is on the same site, but Magnolia. You see, there's lower-speed roads, so we were able to have, use less of the right-of-way for that separation and having some lower plantings. So I want to move now to Proof Brewing, which is an example that's in progress. This one I wanted to show just as also an example of a more constrained site. This is a rendering of what it would look like once complete. It's more constrained because there'll be an existing building, and you also have on there some existing trees on the site, and those are not in the public right-of-way. So what we've been doing is working with the property owner to try to implement the spirit of the code while it might not be an exact representation because of those right-of-way and existing trees. So while we want to keep, the goal here is to keep that separation, to provide as much as possible that buffer between the pedestrian and the moving traffic. So here's one of the concepts we're working through. So even though in one piece, it may still be up against the road for the majority of the site, we're hoping to be able to have it pulled back from the street with those existing trees.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
Ask a question. Could you go back to that picture?
Yes.
Now, we've had a lot of discussion amongst staff and commission offices about the existing trees and when they were planted and the commemoration and all, and on and on. So I understand that those trees are on private property, but are these trees that you are showing me here the ones that are there currently? Or are these ones that somebody's going to plant later?
These are the trees that are there now.
Okay, so this is, and you've made an agreement with Proof?
We're working, we're still working through details of that. This is the concept.
Kind of imagine they agree after the last time they were here. But the point is that that would be very important, and I guess you've explained to them that there's a lot of benefit to them considering the condition of the trees. They're going to need a lot of maintenance and so on and so forth. So good luck with that. I just wanted to make absolutely sure on the record that you are working toward keeping these, considering that they are commemorating people's lost loved ones in battle and so on. So, thank you.
Going back to my previous point, this South Monroe is a state road, and a lot of the key roads throughout Tallahassee are state roads. Tennessee Street, Appalachia Parkway, a lot of them. Those are the ones that the gateway's into the communities. South Monroe is where we started working with DOT through their new framework, which I'll get into momentarily. And it's important that that coordination is a critical element because you see there's Blueprint, CRTPA. In order to have it come together, we have to make certain that we're working towards a similar goal. And some of the frustration, I think, that people have felt with some of the implementation examples of the MMTD have often been on those state roads. So this is the method of working through those going forward. Now, to get into a little bit more detail about FDOT. While many road departments around the country, and many, you know, FDOT was no different. They have worked for many decades off of fairly suburban and rural models. FDOT, over the past few years, is working very hard to rewrite their manuals and to retrain their staff to have a new paradigm that reflects the changing context of the land uses. So as you see here, they use these context classification zones, C1 through C6, with C1 being the most natural and C6 being the most urban. And recognize that you should have different lane widths, sidewalk widths, all of those facilities based on that. Their overarching goal with a complete street, as is ours, is Tallahassee and Leon County, and it's reflected in our comp plan, is that a complete street should reflect the needs of all users and all modes, whether that be cars, cyclists, trucks, pedestrians, and all users, regardless of age or ability. We, it took a lot of, oh, yes.
Thank you. Could you go back to that picture?
Yes.
Would you show us here with this diagram which one of these city classifications will be applied? Like, for example, it seems that C4 is, well, I'm wrong. C5, Urban Center, is the plan for Wallace Street to Tennessee Street. And Wallace Street is actually south of where you showed us the Carepoint building. So is it going to look like that, or is it going to look like this picture?
Well, actually, the next slide, if I can go, and I'll show you the breakout of where these would be.
Well, I think that the most important thing I'm trying to get across here is that I don't think that C5, all the way down, after all the work you just did to try to produce the result, the beautiful result you have, very successful, hard work. I know how hard you worked for that. And then to say that, well, actually, that's not going to be required all the way from there up to Tennessee is, I don't think that's what-
A lot of what varies is going to be sidewalk width, but all of the, all of the cross-sections talked about having the five-foot street planter, so, or street trees and planning strips. So all of them include that recommendation from DOT, and so the sidewalk width may vary depending on the context that's used.
DOT recommended Palmer Avenue to Tennessee Street. That's significantly farther north than Wallace for C5.
If I could move, it might be easier to look at it on the map, but from Paul Russell South, they're recommending staff and DOT. And there was DOT recommendation, and there was what ultimately we agreed amongst each other. So, yeah, Wallace Street up to Tennessee Street would be the most urban piece, correct, which is just a little bit south of Magnolia. And then moving on to the general urban, C4 would be Wallace down to Paul Russell, and then suburban from the Paul Russell South. More, I say suburban commercial more there. So the wider sidewalks would be especially in the C5. And then they could, they could go down from there. So if-
I guess my point is that we're all stressing mobility and sidewalks. And if a sidewalk is really attached to a road, it's part of the road. If it's attached to green space, the way that you have worked on at Carepoint, it's really a walking experience. But in our brutal summers, which we're fortunate enough to enjoy now all the way into October, nobody's going to walk unless there's shade.
Yes.
And so I can't emphasize enough the fact that you've got to provide shade more than, it's fine if we want to be urban like New York City or somewhere like that, but the fact is that if you want people to walk, you're going to have to plant some trees.
Maybe I'm not understanding correctly. My, our intent of, what we're saying is that all of these sections do include street trees.
I hope that's true, but looking at the C5, you've got, this is a great slide. I mean, your presentation is excellent because it's very easy to discuss.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying now. Those, that quick representation of those, that, it was to show building form. At that scale, it would be difficult to get all the way down and show every tree on every one of those. So that representation was to show big buildings versus the natural area. But then when we get into the actual code that implements those and the actual standards that DOT uses to implement them-
It won't really look like C5, is that what you're saying?
It, well, that-
Like this little-
There'll be more green than they represent in those buildings.
That is reassuring. Make sure you write that in ink.
I understand now the, how that was, how that was taken. So with, I just went over those classifications, and that graphic that I used was what DOT was using. I wanted to use that because that is their introductory graphic. And then there's volumes more information that goes beyond that to show how it's actually implemented. So with the next, I went through these. The timing is actually perfect, not only because of DOT classification process, but also because of the resurfacing that they plan to be doing in the near future from Paul Russell to Perkins. And then also for the Monroe Adams Corridor placemaking, which was implemented, which was included in the implementation plan for Blueprint. Both of those are going to be having major steps in the next five to eight years. So the timing is very important. And the Monroe Adams Corridor placemaking will include, the design will be looking at both Monroe itself as well as those remaining cross streets between FAMU Way and Magnolia. So the next steps, and then I'll wrap this up. I talked about the resurfacing and the Blueprint, but going forward, as we see those development applications continue to move forward, now we have a basis of agreement with DOT. There still may be right-of-way and, you know, utility issues to work through, but we do have that agreement as far as, we know what we expect as far as planning strips, sidewalks, and that- and that space in front of the buildings. So it'll make it easier for that public state roadway to mesh with the code that we put in place some years ago. And with that, if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well done. Any other questions? Commissioner Richardson.
Mayor, Cherie, just a question about some of the businesses in South Monroe. I mean, we're going to be doing all of this beautification, but the businesses won't match what we're seeing in terms of the efforts to beautify the area. And I'm speaking specifically about some of the garages along there that look just terrible. Are we working with those businesses in any way?
There are facade improvement programs and certainly when we work with the neighborhoods, whenever people come in to talk about redevelopment or just what can they do with their building, we certainly bring them in, introduce them to the CRA. The zoning code, some of that, some of those things just take time. The zoning code is put in place as things do redevelop that you'll see a very different looking pattern as you're seeing and, you know, with Proof for the redevelopment, with CarePoint for that brand-new building. So some of that will occur. We had, it's that balance between the public and private and the code is one of our strongest tools, along with DOT's expenditures on the road, for making that change over time. So just like with the Greenways Master Plan, we can't do it all at once, but we do have a guiding master plan so that as things redevelop, we can get the pieces and it all starts to come together. Like Gaines Street, you start to see, as part of it redevelops, then the land values then start affecting what happens along the rest of the corridor.
Is it possible that we can do, we can be more aggressive with code enforcement? Because I know some of it is just like abandoned cars that have been parked there for years, probably.
And we've periodically had increased code enforcement. So what I'll do is, you know, of course, take this back and talk with Karen and Growth Management.
Okay. And so, and I guess, you know, we could take this up with the CRA, but I've said in the past, I don't know if all of those business owners are even aware of the facade grants. They may not even have that information, and if they were made aware, you know, they might would, they might would agree to spruce up their facilities if they knew they had those funds available to them.
And Roxanne is here, so again, we'll make sure to follow up and do everything we can to make certain that people are aware of them.
All right. Thank you, Cherie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, Cherie. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Almost exceptional job.
You have acceptance.
Looking at this tree, this picture reinforces that stat, was it 90% tree cover?
Not quite that much, but there's a lot.
Eighty?
It's a lot.
Like extraordinary amount by comparison.
Mr. Mayor, 55% of Tallahassee is covered by a tree canopy, which by our records is the most coverage of any city like ours in the United States.
That's incredible.
Let's try to keep it that way.
And this is very close to downtown with this image.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioners, we'll have a Community Connections update from Ashley Edwards, 13.03, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Briefly, at your last meeting, Mayor and Commissioners, you requested an update on the Palmer Monroe Teens Center's highly successful Community Connections program, which you're familiar with. We provided a summary in your agenda materials, and Ashley is here to provide you a brief presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, the Community Connections program at the Palmer Monroe Teens Center is a restorative justice program that focuses on nonviolent communication. It serves 50 kids a year, and those kids are currently referred to the program through the state attorney's office after an arrest for a court-ordered diversion as a condition of probation through the judicial process, by civil citation, or through school or self-referrals from the community. The program operates under a 14, three 14-week cycles each year, and includes restorative justice conferences, nonviolent communication classes, case management, and community service. The kids meet three times a week, twice for classes on empathetic communication skills, and once for one-on-one case management. The program functions around a power-sharing model of relationship where participants are bound by agreements they've made and needs and feelings of all participants can be shared and considered relevant. Safety, respect, consistency, accountability, and care are a big part of encouraging these teens to recognize that their voices and actions matter and to make better choices about expression and action. Our own Dr. Cindy Bigby and her staff, Julia Denholm and Dan Kahn, who I'd like to recognize are here with us tonight, they do an absolutely outstanding job with these kids and they truly make a difference in their lives. Since 2014, 125 youth have successfully graduated from the program, and they boast an incredibly impressive recidivism rate of only 12%. Over 28% of the graduates returned to volunteer in the program, and we're especially thankful for the fact that we have had over 100 community volunteers participate with us, and many of them have come back and participated multiple times. It's a very successful program. We're proud of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that, Ashley, and obviously to the dynamic team that runs this program. Just for comparison's sake, recidivism is measured in this program at the same period that the normal adjudicatory process measures recidivism. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the state recidivism rate amongst this group of people hovers around 40%. They're experiencing 12% recidivism rate. The best way to keep crime down, one, is making sure we don't have offenses in the first place, but secondly, reducing the number of people reoffending and going deeper into the criminal justice process. Last week, there were a number of folks who came up and gave testimony and a request for additional resources. I was hoping that you all would be able to enumerate what those additional asks were. To me, it seems if you've got a model that's working and in fact, working extremely well, we ought to be looking for ways to scale it up, get more folks moved in, more folks graduated out, and to continue to press down on the rate of recidivism. And also, you know, there are parts of this that are, to be even more impressive, and that is the number of graduates who are pouring back into the program to serve as mentors and leaders. These are folks who have credibility with new folks who enter the program are probably some of the best situated to continue to practice those NVC skills. And I think just deepen our capacity and the number of trainers that we have out in the community. So I didn't see it in this document, but is there another document that shows what the additional asks were? What was the budget ask?
I believe that the citizens that spoke were concerned with making sure that the staff that we have that are currently part-time, we have several that are part-time, could be made whole and made up to a comparable wage in the, you know, that's within the social services community. And that would be, in terms of the wage itself, would be approximately $32,000 to get them up to that competitive wage.
Well, I'll just say, my support is fully for that, and I would also hope that that also allows the program to expand its capacity and to also continue to work with throughout Leon County and Leon County schools to see more of our young people move in that direction. Anecdotally, I was in one of the sessions and in briefings on this previously, some of the skills that these young people are getting around communicating, communicating to their parents, communicating to their peers, they actually had to institute some training also for parents because the kids were coming home more prepared to communicate in a nonviolent, in a non-aggressive way by expressing to their parents, this is how I feel when this and this and that happens. The parents, obviously not trained themselves, aren't really all the way certain how to deal with that. And so, you know, these folks have added other elements of support for the family that allows everyone to sort of grow with this, which helps to change the home environment. So I know this was part of the budget considerations, but I just wanted to at least flag, you know, my support for trying to cede these positions in a more permanent way and grow this program such that it includes more of our Leon County system. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend you. This is, this program would not exist if it were not for you. And you have tirelessly pushed this, and this isn't a recent thing. This goes back how many years?
The center opened in 2010.
So, and I remember every budget, not just this budget, every budget you pushing for this program. It has had wonderful success. Sometimes when we sit up here, you see so many issues come and go. You don't often see an elected official sink their teeth into one and not let go. You have not let go on this, and it has borne fruit. Thank you for your work on it.
I appreciate it. The real credit goes to that group of people and the young folks who I've observed in their sessions, who are heads and shoulders, frankly, above where I think communication skills are for young people right now in this day and age. And increasingly impressive are the ones that come back and serve as mentors in the program work. So Dr. Bigby, you're the one that converted me on this in the first place, back at Rickards High School, and we spent a day, and I can't recall what you call that walk. The challenge day. And I'm not sure how many of us had the chance to do that, and that was before, maybe in 2006, 2007, something, felt like much earlier than that. But more importantly, these folks are demonstrating real results. And when you have a program like that that demonstrates yield, I think we do what we can to try to cede it and grow it. Commissioner Richardson.
Ashley, just wanted to ask, what are the ages of the students that you're working with?
13 to 18.
13 to 18.
And typically, we see, I think mostly high school students, would you say, Cindy? High school, middle school?
Are they, are they?
Mixture.
Are they dropouts or do they have their?
They run the gamut. They run the gamut from kids who, again, have been referred from court systems through probation. Some of them have had trouble in school, some of them have had trouble at home. It's a true mixture.
Okay. And the reason I ask that, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned Leon County schools. As you all know, I'm working at Lively now, and I see this as a tremendous opportunity for those that may be 18 or above, actually 16 or above, if they, because they can drop out at 16, they choose to. But particularly those that, if they have a diploma, if they don't, we can get them into adult and community education to get their GED, but we can get them into those training programs at Lively to get them a job skill. And there are certainly lots of those in the community now that are paying good money where there are tremendous shortages, particularly in the construction trades areas, some of the healthcare fields, HVAC, aviation. And so if there is an opportunity for that, I would certainly like to pursue that.
Absolutely. We'd love to.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.04. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This action item requests your acceptance of $425,625 in funding from the CRA. You recall you took that vote a couple of weeks ago and pledged those funds to support an application for a low-income tax credit funding to construct a 100-unit affordable senior housing development. This development is part of the master plan for the redevelopment of the Orange Avenue Public Housing Complex, which is a key component of the overall revitalization strategy for South City and being implemented in conjunction with purpose-built communities. Michael Parker is here to answer questions. I'd like to recognize Brenda Williams in attendance tonight. She's joined by Ray Knansky. And you know Brenda and Ray, and I really enjoy working with them. I love the passion that we have. I'm looking forward to this development. And again, Michael's here to answer any questions.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor. Second.
There's a motion and a second on the item. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now on item 13.05. City Manager.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the city and the county, we jointly entered into an MOU regarding the administration of the CHSP program. As part of that agreement, it was to conduct a human services needs assessment. This item is requesting your approval of the final outcome of the request for qualifications that was conducted. And again, Michael Parker, lead on these matters, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Parker, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to item 13.06, update on the CHSP recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael's doing a good job tonight. He's seated right here. He went ahead and settled in since we've got a run of items for him, but this item, Michael, has been working with Pat Holliday, and we've got a short presentation. But this is the first two-year cycle funding for our CHSP process, 2019, 2020. As you know, and has been indicated earlier in the meeting, this year was different and that United Way is not part of it. This particular item recommends the allocation of funding as well as a makeup amount. At the conclusion of the allocation of funding, we realized that there were some agencies that were going to be disproportionately impacted. It recommends pledging $100,000 extra to CHSP on the part of the city, and the county has joined us in that endeavor as well to make $200,000 available. Pat Holliday is going to make a brief presentation to us tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Human Services Funding Recommendations, which consists of the CDBG projects included in the city's U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan, as well as other community-wide initiatives and the Community Human Service Partnership Funded Program. I also like to note that in the CHSP process, we also include Change for Change Funds. Each year, 100% of the donations collected through the Change for Change program are allocated through the CHSP process on the basic needs and emergency services team. This year, we were able to collect and actually allocate $116,605 of Change for Change Funds. Also, most notably, is that since the inception of the Change for Change program in 2004, we have actually collected over $1.1 million, which has been allocated directly to a provision of human services for direct services for basic needs such as food and shelter for families with children. I would also like to give you just a brief highlights of the CHSP process this year. This year, of course, as you've noted earlier, the city manager, we had two major actions that impacted the CHSP. We transitioned the process from a one-year grant process into a two-year grant process, really trying to ease the burden on the agencies. I don't know if you can imagine, only human services organizations have to operate where they don't know from year to year how much funding they have. So therefore, can you imagine being a staff person hired by human services and you don't know if you have a job from year to year? So this is very important that we operate and implement this two-year process. The second issue that happened that affected CHSP, of course, was this departure of the United Way. This year, we spent quite a bit of time restructuring the process, so now it's a joint process between the city of Tallahassee and Leon County. And in fiscal year 2017, '18, for example, the United Way contributions represented over $1.9 million of the total CHSP fund of $5.2 million. This year, the CHSP fund is slightly over $3,449,000, which is a significant reduction, as you can imagine. Therefore, this made this the most challenging year ever. We've had years where we've had to incorporate $300,000 losses, but we have never had such a year as this. One of the realities of this year, too, is that the agencies' requests were over $1.8 million beyond the capacity of the CHSP program. One thing I like to do very much so right now, too, is acknowledge the human service organizations in our, in our community. As the mayor just spoke about, they do tremendous work in our community. Oftentimes, they don't get the recognition that they so dearly deserve, but I do want to let them know from the bottom of my heart how much I thank them for everything that they do. I get the opportunity every year to visit all of the programs that we fund through CHSP. We see tremendous things being done in this community. The CHSP programs, they fund, they actually serve over 40,000 of our citizens each year. That's how important they are to this community. They provide a valuable, important safety net. Also, we could not operate the CHSP process, of course, without our community volunteers. I won't dare try to name them because I'll inadvertently miss someone's name, but this year, we had 80 volunteers. They reviewed 97 programs submitted by 79 agencies. Each volunteer this year contributed an average of 54 hours of service, which represents over 4,300 hours of contributions. Of course, this year, they had to put in more time because they had to review two-year application materials versus one year. If you use the standard independent sector rate of $24.69, this is how they basically, this is how they calculate the value of volunteer. value of volunteers, an average national rate. They contributed well over $100,000 of their service time. Many of them have served the, in this process for over a decade, and also throughout the conception of CHSP, which is over 20 years old now. Can you imagine? It is very rare that you can ever see a partnership that has sustained over a 20-year time period. That speaks highly. We know that this is in the best interest of our community. I would also like to sincerely thank all of our volunteers. We have some of the most magnificent citizens in this community. I can't even tell you how much. And this is the most important and the most wonderful part of my job, is working with the community. And I'd like to thank you very much. And if you have any questions, Michael Parker and I are available to answer and respond to any of those questions. Thank you so much.
Right. As always, Pat, to you and, and Michael, and the Citizens Committee, a real deep appreciation to the work that you all do. I love the fact that at least Tallahassee and Leon County are continuing this enduring partnership. It is the marvel of cities all across the country who previously did it in segmented ways. You all have tried to catalyze the collective financial interests and investments of human services and seek real outcomes and solutions. And so I think the work speaks for itself. Thank you for your work. Commissioners, any questions, comments before a motion?
Good stuff.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor to accept the CHSP recommendations for 2018, 19, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now at item thirteen point zero seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner, as you, as you are aware, we're in the midst of a replacement electric generation project that involves 94 megawatts of new, clean, efficient generation, two small units at the substation adjacent to TMH, as well as four larger units at our Hopkins Power Plant. The implementation of these units, which are not yet commercial, results in a more efficient, effective, and reliable system, and allows for the retirement of older units. As I indicated, we have some of the units at our Hopkins Power Plant. They're four 18-megawatt units. We did design the facility to allow for five units at the time. The decision was a couple of years ago, and we had debated on whether we add four, five. At this point, there are four. And tonight, we're recommending the addition of a fifth unit that is within the budget that you previously approved. It will add no more financial burden on the system. And overall, it will provide enhanced reliability and operating flexibility, ultimately to meet our long-term renewable goal. So as we move to a renewable community, this provides that flexibility to do so. In particular, it complements solar very well, and it, and it continues to add reliability. Rob McGarrett and his team are here. Rob's going to make a short presentation on this matter.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the manager said, two years ago, we came to you, and you authorized us to move forward with the replacement generation project to both reduce our cost and improve the environmental signature, and continue to make us ready for more renewable resources on our, on our system because of the intermittency of that, those resources. That project's moving along well. I'll report to you, the, the two units at the hospital site, while they're not in official commercial operation, they've actually been in commissioning operation for the last four weeks. And this week, we're doing the performance and environmental testing for them to go officially commercial. So they're operating real well. The Hopkins units will be in that stage in the middle of November, and we hope by Thanksgiving to have them operating and supporting the system. Over the last two years, we have continued to look at our system and continued to assess the long-term plans, both from a renewable perspective, as well as from all of our other perspectives, cost, reliability, diversity, both in fuel issues and size, unit size issues. And as the manager indicated, we're before you tonight recommending that we add a fifth unit at the Hopkins facility. This unit, we believe, is consistent with the long-term plans we're talking about with renewables. As we've shared before, these new units can start up in five minutes, is compared to anywhere from 30 minutes to four to eight to 12 hours on some of our other units. We can start and then stop them as many times as we need to during the day, which helps us dovetail when we have clouds and other things come in with our solar that impacts the solar output for the farm. And those are some of the issues that we've looked at over the, since we were here two years ago. Our solar, our first solar farm's been in operation since December. So we've got nine months of experience with it, and we've seen some of the, the dispatch challenges there. But we think this fifth unit will provide greater reliability, greater, greater operating flexibility for our system, and is consistent with the long-term plans. And when I speak of reliability, I'm not talking about the end-use customer having an impact from a tree, or a squirrel, or something like that. We're talking about the bigger system reliability issues, where if we lose one of our big units, Hopkins Unit Two or Pertom Unit Eight, especially during the summer or winter, we've got to have the ability to back that up. If the solar cuts out on us because of weather, clouds coming through. And then one of the things that's changed is the mag labs talking to us about more capacity potentially being needed there to support their operations. And they put a huge demand on our system in a very short period of time when they ramped their magnets up. So all of those things together is what got us here tonight to recommend this fifth unit. The, the good news, as the manager said, is we can do it based on the budget that you've authorized for the replacement generation project. So I'm not asking for any more money. We are asking for permission to enter into the contract amendments to purchase the fifth engine from Wartzilla, who has held their price to be, other than the euro conversion rate, the same as, essentially the same as what we paid for the other four units, and with the contractor that's doing the construction on site so that they can, as soon as we have the permits, start that work. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have on the project.
Mr. McGarrett, the, the city commission previously, I think unanimously voted to instruct staff to begin working on the development of a 100% renewable plan. Can you tell us how this fits in? What is a lifeline of this particular unit? I realize the planning takes some time, but I'm, I just want to be clear what we're committing ourselves to, how long we're committing ourselves to it, and then where you all are in that planning process. You know, as all of us know, these, these kinds of requests don't happen overnight. This is part of a longer-term planning strategy. How long did we know we needed to do it? How quickly do we need to act on it? And then where are we in the planning process?
We have been actively working on the renewable plan that y'all directed us to do last year. We've had a number of meetings with the stakeholders that were before the commission, the night y'all directed us to take that action. We've been doing some internal studies ourselves, looking at based on our current configuration, or the configuration of the electric system come the end of the replacement project, replacement generation project. For example, we've had a consultant study, what's the maximum solar we can put on our system and still operate within the operating and regulatory requirements. We're in the middle of a study now dealing with a regulatory issue known as ACE, or Balancing Standard, to look at those same things. And then we've been working with the stakeholders to fully scope out what that study's going to look like. And we expect that report soon from the, from the consultant, where they met with the stakeholders and met with city staff. It is going to take some time to put together a full renewable power plan. The other thing that we've got to look at is the technologies that are out there. While solar and wind are fully developed technologies today in the renewable world, there's other technologies that are going to have to come up to speed in order to support that plan and us still have a reliable system. And one of those is battery technology, or some sort of storage technology. I think batteries are going to be a big player in the future, but they're pretty immature in their technology. The good news is, these types of engines, we're starting to see discussions in the industry. In fact, I had one with Nextera last week, where there are discussions about mating batteries, these types of reciprocating engines and solar together to have a total package. So we've got two of the three of those, and as battery technology improves, and we're watching that, I would expect we would look at doing some things with batteries. But that's sort of where we are, and the type of things we're having to look at. So it's going to be a longer-term plan to get there. These are, these units will be on the books for 25 years from a financial perspective. That's what we borrowed the money over. They can run longer than that if we need to, or they can be taken down sooner than that if the technologies and the cost all get there. I think it's important to note, though, for this city, we've been on a journey of sustainability. I've been here 27 years in November. Today, serving 50% more energy than we did in 1991, we're emitting less CO2 in tons per year than we did in 1991. And even with this replacement generation project, we'll emit less CO2 for the same energy going forward because of the efficiency improvement. So we've been well on that way, and I think we're well-positioned, and these units would help us be even better positioned going forward for a renewable world.
I would just recommend that as you, clearly, none of us want to move this at a pace that in any way destabilizes the finances and, and the reliability of the system. But in you all's planning, if you can be sure to open it up to ensure that stakeholders remain at the table as you go through it. These are sophisticated players as well. Obviously, they're as committed to this commission's directive as you all are on staff. But I don't think you all should sort of retreat away from those stakeholder groups as you negotiate your way through the process.
And, and we fully intend on keeping the stakeholders involved. We've met with them a number of times. We'll continue meeting with them in the, in the future. And we actually see that stakeholder process needing to expand as we go into the next steps of this, because this, this is going to have to be dependent on the full scope of the plan. There's going to have to be much more community buy-in, because there are going to have to be changes in how we do things. There may be financial impacts. So we see the need to not only interact with the stakeholders that came and met with y'all a year ago on this issue, but the broader community as well. And that's part of the work we're doing with Infront right now, is to say, how have other communities done that? How would we, what would be the recommendations to go through in doing that? Because we want that community input and stakeholder input.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, follow up with Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I would say that I, I did have an extensive briefing with the manager and, and with Rob on this very issue, and was convinced that there is no retreat from our efforts to develop the renewable plan, that this, in fact, is, is a part of that plan moving forward. And, and in fact, during that, that discussion, I suggested to them that they involve the stakeholders and let them know that this would be coming to the commission tonight. And they, in fact, did that. And you heard the representative from Sustainable Tallahassee speak to that. But, but, but I'm convinced that, that it's, there is no retreat from our goal of 100% renewable. But this is a part of the strategy for getting us there prior to the technology that Rob talked about actually coming on board. So I'm, I'm supportive of the expansion and would move the item if a motion is necessary.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said by, by both of you. The technology is rapidly changing. That's a good thing. I was here for Pertom Eight, and the combined cycle unit that we put in with Pertom Eight was the best and brightest and cleanest at the time that we could possibly push, go forward with. And of course, now the technology has moved in leaps and bounds since then. Peaking units back then, operating off jet fuel, were not nearly as efficient, nor as environmentally friendly, as this RECIP unit that we're talking about today. The, with the fact that it possibly could run off batteries in the future is, is a tremendous step toward renewable energy. But it also enables us to continue to have reliability in our system. I've been here when we had a brownout, and we nearly lost the entire system. And with solar, which we are heavily dependent upon now, we're moving more and more forward with solar, it's weather-dependent. So to be able to have a small unit, what RECIP Five will be, that can go from zero to fully charged in five minutes, do it much more efficiently than any of the current units, I think that is a tremendous step toward our overall plan of, of being renewable, and it is a failsafe to ensure that we have reliability in our system.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Rob. But I also want to say thanks to all the folks in the audience that are, have really kept renewable energy right at the forefront of the community's attention. I wanted to say, though, that I have, as I watched the energy utility and learned more and more about it from the first day I came here, consistently, you all have looked for ways to enter into any partnership possible. When a solar farm was going to be built in Gaston County, y'all were right there in negotiations. And you've always kept the ratepayers in mind, in the, those folks that live in the $45,000 household income family of four, that really are very, very sensitive to the cost of their power. And so combining those two efforts, I would hold Tallahassee up against any city in the country. Some people may say that they do 100% renewable. But when you really look, it's a shell game, where they're selling their generation power to a utility, and then they're buying solar from that utility. In this case, you're really putting your money where your mouth is. And we have our own solar farm. We're about to have our second solar farm. And so I want to thank you for all the efforts you do. This is a, between here and 2035, that's going to be a journey. It's going to be a day to day to week to month, to month to month. It's not all going to happen in the next day, or week, or month, or year. And, and what I want to make sure that we do is include all the stakeholders, just like you said, and also to make sure that we, we buy into tested technology. I don't want to be the test case. And I also don't want us to put $30 million into a battery now that's going to be obsolete. And I mean, look at our televisions, for heaven's sakes. It used to cost thousands of dollars to buy a LED screen TV, and now you can get one from Walmart for $250. And so as these technologies develop, there will be the right time to enter in, and I trust you all, to be looking for those technological advances and to incorporate them at the right time. So thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you. I, I was, I should have mentioned this. We have entered into the contract for the 40-megawatts solar farm, and we're still working with the airport through the master planning and FAA approvals on that. But we've got the purchase power agreement and lease agreement executed with that company for the 40-megawatt facility. So hopefully, late, this time next year, we'll be close to that.
I think we, I think you're hearing still a full commitment from this commission, and really looking forward to maybe some interim updates as to how we are planning for the future of renewable and our 2035 goal.
And, and we expect to bring an update back to you in the near future on where we are with the, the plan, and what the next few steps will be.
Got it. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second, I believe. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to now move on to item thirteen point zero eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioners, this item requests your approval to negotiate an agreement for the sale of .86 acres of city land on North Bicycle Boulevard in the Gaines Street area to Park Seven Group. The sale of this property is consistent with all of the city commission real estate policy requirements, and has been recommended for your approval by the city's real estate committee. Judy Donahoe, our real estate director, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
to answer any questions that you might have.
Move.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second on approval. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we will be in a break and reconvene for our public hearing on the budget at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Now reconvene for the public hearing on the second and final public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget plan. I'll hand this item over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Robert Wiggins, who has led the charge on this budget, to give us a short overview. It's been a journey. I think it's been a good one, a lot of good feedback. And if we can summarize it, I'd like Robert to take a moment to do so. And then, of course, there are numerous steps that you have to follow in this process. Robert will hand it to the city attorney so she can walk us through those steps.
Yeah, I'll ask if the presentation can be brought up. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. Tonight will be the eighth meeting and the second statutorily required public hearing on the fiscal year 19 budget. The fiscal year 19 balanced budget has been developed based on frequent updates and feedback from the commission on community input and ensuring priorities for public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and quality of life. The fiscal year 19 general fund budget for police, parks, and recreation, roads, sidewalks, and human services is $158.8 million, with the operating budget for six utilities, building inspection, fire, golf, and a handful of other funds, $727.3 million, with an additional investment in infrastructure and a capital budget of $161.8 million. We always say that the, we've been through the eighth meeting where we've talked about the budget. We have a 12-month period to do that. As we finish this budget, we are avidly looking at the next steps for the next budget. And as such, we've updated the municipal cost comparison. Those are two of the graphs that we are going to bring here today, and it looks like we will not be able to show them. But there'll be plenty of time to do that as we enter the first quarter of fiscal year 18. I think the most important results from that municipal cost comparison, which we have updated for the city of Tallahassee data that we know, we know what our municipal, we know what our ad valorem tax rate is, 4.1 mils, maintain that rate. We know that we've had excellent growth in the city through our economic development, which has allowed us to apply that ad valorem tax base to police, parks, and recreation, human services. And then we also know that we are going to talk and have you approve tonight a electric and gas rate study, which recommends lowering bills for customers. By maintaining that millage rate, by benefiting from new construction, and your approval of a decrease in electric and gas bills, we know that our neighbors and businesses will pay less in fiscal year 19 than what they paid for services in fiscal year 18. I think that's a pretty amazing step for a budget. We know that confidently with the actions that we take tonight. I think even more importantly is that our neighbors and our fellow business owners will take that savings, and we estimate that to be about $8 million in savings, and be able to reinvest that in the community. So with some growth in ad valorem, we can fund police, parks, and recreation, and human services. And with reduction in utility rates, we're able to pass on that savings to our neighbors and to our businesses. If we add in natural gas customers, that's an additional $2 million in cost savings that will be, that will be shared in our community and reinvested. We'll continue to gather data on other municipal governments as they make their changes. We're confident that we're competitive among our peers. We'll publish that, bring those data sets back, and then start making decisions for the fiscal year 20 budget. For tonight, the first step in adopting the citywide budget is to accept public comments on electric utility and gas utility ordinances. And with your consideration of public comments and adoption of those ordinances, we'll have a balanced budget among the 14 operating funds, and we'll proceed through the city and downtown improvement authority, millage, and public budget hearings, with the final step to adopt an $889.1 million fiscal year 19 balanced budget, where the community will pay less, and that savings will be invested back in the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if there are none, then it's appropriate for the city attorney to go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, separate from the approval of the city of Tallahassee and the DIA final millage rates and final budget, at this time, the city commission is scheduled, as a part of this item, to conduct the first and only public hearings on two proposed ordinances, the electric rate and the gas rate ordinances. First for consideration is the electric rate ordinance, the title of which reads as follows. Ordinance number 18-0-27, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-226, 21-227, 228, 229, 230, 231, 234, 235, 236, 237, 238, 240, 241, and 243, of the code of general ordinances of the city of Tallahassee relating to electric service, including applicable charges and rates, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. At this time, it would be appropriate to take any speakers on this ordinance.
Are there any speakers?
Mayor, I don't have speakers, but I believe, I don't know if you wish to speak on the budget or the rate study. At this point, we're on the rate study, so we'll come back to you in just a moment. But we have no speakers on the rate study in particular.
Great, thank you.
If there's any commission discussion, if not, a motion.
So move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next will be the public hearing on the gas rate ordinance. The title of the ordinance reads as follows. Ordinance number 18-0-28, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-432, 21-452, 453, 454, 457, and 21-460 of the code of general ordinances of the city of Tallahassee relating to gas service, including applicable charges and rates, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. At this point in time, it would be appropriate to call for public speakers.
Are there any speakers?
Again, mayor, on this rate study, there are no speakers.
Is there a motion?
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, there are certain things I need to read into the record, and then we'll take public comment on the millage rate and on the proposed budget for the city and the downtown improvement authority. The staff has just discussed with you. After you've heard the public comment and before you vote on the budget, there will be time for your discussion of the proposed budget. This is the second and final public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget. This final hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Saturday, September 22, 2018. Neither the date of the first hearing, September 12, nor today's date, conflicts with any county commission or school board meeting hearing dates. Again, I need to read the following statement into the record. The proposed final millage rate for fiscal year 2019 is 4.1 for the city of Tallahassee, 1 mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9355 by 4.69%. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's millage rate of 4.1 mils. Attached to the agenda item is resolution number 18-R-46, which states in resolution form the percentage that the final millage rate is more than the rollback rate. Now it is time for the public to speak on the city's millage rate and proposed city budget. At this time, we would need speakers on the city's proposed millage rate.
Believe you have one?
We have one speaker not on the millage rate, but on the budget itself. So none on the millage rate. Is that where we are, city attorney?
That is correct.
Got it. Commissioners, there's no speakers. Is there a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so now we're going to have speakers on the city's proposed final budget.
We do have one speaker, Diane Williams-Cox.
Diane Williams-Cox, 2312 Mavis Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. Good evening, commission. I have, commissioners, I have been looking at the budget online in your board docs, and there's reference made to Attachment 8. And I have not been able to find Attachment 8, which is in reference to the external organizations that receive funding. I don't know if there's somewhere else that I can find that information. The attachments go to seven.
Ms. Williams-Cox, we'll make sure we get you that. I know that's been attached to other items. I know we have it. And I'll ask Director Wiggins to get that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers, mayor?
Great.
At this point in time, we need to allow public input on the downtown improvement authority's proposed millage rate, which is 1 mil, and the downtown improvement authority's proposed budget, which is $405,689, as presented on September 12. This hearing for the downtown improvement authority has been advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on September 22, 2018, in compliance with Florida statute section 200.065. At this time, we will call for speakers on the downtown improvement authority's final proposed millage rate.
There are no speakers, mayor.
At this time, we'll call for speakers on the downtown improvement authority's proposed final budget.
No speakers on the budget either.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maddox.
I've asked this question publicly before, wanted to ask it again. The executive director of the downtown improvement authority is a former business partner of mine, and I lease a house from her as well. Is that in any way a conflict in voting for the downtown improvement authority's budget or millage rate?
No, it is not.
Thank you.
At this point, mayor, we need a motion for approval of the city's final millage rate of 4.1 mils, as reflected in resolution 18-R-46, the title of which reads as follows. Resolution number 18-R-46, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, as 4.1 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9355 by 4.69%, and establishing an effective date thereof. And this millage rate is more than the rollback rate. May I have a motion for the approval of the final millage rate?
There's a motion.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the millage rate. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate at this time for the commissioners to discuss the budget of the city and the downtown improvement authority.
Great. Commissioners, I just wanted to reiterate my support. If there's any other interest in trying to bring the program budget up, I think it was 33,000 that was mentioned during Ashley Edwards' presentation. There's a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. A motion and a second on that. We can take that item, and then we can continue with other comments from commissioners. All in favor of the amendment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Other questions, comments, adjustments? Commissioners?
It's just a comment. Nine years ago, when I sat here, mayor, you remember that?
He's, it was nine long years.
We had chambers filled, people standing with signs, and they were out the door. And there was, I'll never forget it, because I'd only been on the commission about two weeks, and people were pointing their finger at me that I'd been raising their taxes all these years. And I thought, it wasn't me. And mayor, you remember, there was somebody very special and close to me that was in the front row holding a sign?
Yes, your mother.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say that, but thank you very much.
I think it was like, fire all the creeps.
It was something like that. Mom and I had a little discussion about that after the meeting. But through all that, we made it through, and we've had some other budgets that, from time to time, have created concern among the public. But the city has been run extremely well by the staff members that are here and ones that have gone. And we should all be quite proud. And it is really amazing to be sitting here today. And I will take it as a electorate and a citizenry that are very pleased the way things are being run, to not have anybody here being critical of what we're doing. So having said that, I just wanted to say my piece, how much things have changed, and I like this a lot more.
Ditto, and a huge compliment to the staff, the professional staff. I think I pointed this row out a little bit earlier, the young guns, finance within the city's staff. But a really well-run system that frankly doesn't start three months out, is a year-round process, and the commission has increasingly engaged over a longer period of time. And I think that's been to the city's benefit. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I wanted to make some comments that were similar to the ones that Commissioners Ziffer made, because the first year that I actually was exposed to the budget was the year I was running for office. And that year, the budget came out on Tuesday afternoon, and on Thursday morning was the first budget hearing. It was going to be, it was a date in August. So there were not even 48 hours between the time that the budget hit the public street and was to be discussed at the first public hearing. So it was pretty daunting to try to figure it out so quickly. And I'm not sure anybody really could. But through the years, this little change, that little change, this little change, that little change. And then a couple of years ago, when we started having quarterly budget updates, that's when we began to, budgeting, as you said, is a year-round, now it's year-round. We don't just come here in June and talk about the budget for the year. The first change that was made was that it started, that discussion began a few months earlier, in April. And then that became a quarterly event. So not only does it make it much, much, much better for the public to be come involved, it makes it easier for the commissioners. I mean, can you imagine getting the, and Commissioner Ziffer, I know that he was appointed, and he was immediately handed this big stack. Well, what we are able to do now is to go every quarter to be brought up to speed on exactly where the budget items are. Budget hearings are constantly going on, and so are briefings. And so this is such a much better process. And I want to especially shout out to management for this, because it has just, it's night and day. But most importantly, it's so much more easy to digest for everyone, for the public, for the commissioners, and then the decisions are more well-founded. And so I really appreciate that.
Here. Commissioner Maddox.
I wanted to thank Anita Favors, who started the process of aggressively looking for citizen input in budgeting, not just coming to the meetings, but aggressively going to the community to talk to citizens, and Rick Fernandez for giving us the year-long budget transparency process that we have today. I think that both of those two were innovative and real improvements. We were all here for Mr. Fernandez's, and it is, tonight is, like you said, Commissioner Ziffer, tonight is the proof of what a good process that was.
Here, here. Commissioners, if there are no other comments here on the, I'm sorry, there's probably more steps.
We need a motion to move approval of adjustments to the city's final fiscal year 2019 budget, as recommended in the agenda item, of course, and as changed by your discussion.
There's a motion. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
The next step, step eight, is to approve the final fiscal year 2019 budget, as amended by your discussion, reflected in appropriations resolution 18-R-47, the title of which reads as follows. Resolution number 18-R-47, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the downtown improvement authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, designating the sources of revenue and set appropriations, providing an effective date, and which reflects the changes to the proposed budget that were previously approved by the commission as a result of your discussion. May I have a motion for approval of the 2019 budget, as reflected in resolution 18-R-47 and as amended by your discussion?
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
We now need a motion for approval of the downtown improvement authority's final millage rate of 1 mil and move approval of resolution 18-R-46.
There's a motion. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously.
Then we need a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final fiscal year 2018 budget, which totals $405,689, and Resolution 18-R-47.
Great, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
This concludes the commission's required actions on fiscal year 2019 budget for the City of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority.
Awesome. Thank you so much to the attorney and staff for that. Commissioners, we're now on to item 15.02, City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in the urban pedestrian dash one, U.P. dash one zoning district on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts and severability and providing for an effective date. This is the first and only public hearing on ordinance 18-Z-23. Are there any speakers?
Move the items.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
There are no speakers.
And no speakers. Okay, come on up, and if you will, complete a form after your comments.
Ma'am, if you would begin your remarks with the microphone, that way everyone will be able to hear you, and you'll have three minutes for your remark, and we'll just gather a speaker form from you at the completion.
Is that good enough? Or good?
Perfect.
My name is Carol Roundtree, 1993. Buses are, first off, talking right now, on sidewalks, right? You need more, and more of their sidewalks. All areas of town. I live right by Reading Road, buses are awful, awful, awful. Bus freedom, they are cool, though. I actually know it's time, I know. Hi. I'm nervous. Calm down.
It's all good.
No, no, it's still time. Have you ever taken a bus before in Tallahassee? You know, it's cold, but they're very cool now. But the city needs to, I'm big in 2017, 2010, that, and in person, Mr. Brian, why am I Miss Karen Ross here? They say, oh, man, we have a real, big, real, actual, now, we're all right in town. Let's see if I can. I voted for my wife, too. Thanks, Scott. Let's see again. I'm here to talk to you. The fiscal productation, or production, whatever you call it, of the 29 name improvement for buses, this is also cost to Metro, buses darn Metro, needs to be drastically improved, I say to all of you. Now, you're on Mr. Maddox, and Mr. Hope you hear me all. Fast, I got calm, yes, here you go. One word at a time, that works, right?
Yes.
Okay. Proceed further, if I may. Thank you all for listening to me. Big ears, you all can tell. Mostly, my point is of Star Metro, because it's awful. I went to, I went to Fort Lauderdale, Tampa, Miami, the buses are maybe half hour, I'm trying to, I was there, too. They also run on Sundays. You go here, I know, Sunday, no bus there on Sunday, and at home, you can go anywhere, you can bust it, I use Uber account, that's very healthy, too. Very, I mean, very good, because they are fast. The buses are high, people are all noisy, and you got the kids there, they're crying, they're screaming, they got the bellies, they all, ha, 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 I'm sorry. Myself. Many years ago, I had a big stroke, I was 15, a gigantic stroke, I almost died. So this might, I carry all the time. Not to hurt you, it's mostly my stability. Looking a lot, a lot, 15 broken bones, seriously, broken many bones. And Mr. Gilliam, wish you the best, and you were, give you an editorial race, that's right? And thank you all, I still have to say, okay? Heard my beef, and I hope you will work on that, seriously. Also, I want you to email, you email me, I'm just, actually, you're very good, very calm, speaker, everything you said, everywhere, and so, Mr. Supper, you have been to be heard a lot. I think you've been heard. And Miss Nancy Miller, you are wonderful, you're all wonderful. That's all I have to say for my man.
Thank you so much.
From Reading Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm voting, say so, I am.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, can we have Mr. Van Pelt get with her to see if we can get her information about specific things?
I think that's right.
With Star Metro?
I think that's right, Jamie, if you don't mind. Thank you. Next speaker.
No other speakers on this public hearing.
Got it. Commissioners, there are no additional speakers on this item. It's the first and only public hearing on this ordinance. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. We're now at the portion of the meeting for speakers on unagended business. Are there any speakers?
Mayor, we do have several speakers for this portion of the meeting. The first speaker will be Stanley Sims. Mr. Sims will be followed by Sandra Collins.
Good afternoon. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, and I've been doing so well on my presentation. One of my clients, as you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm not in Tallahassee leadership. I have a group of people from the street has put me in a mentoring program, and they were very pleased last week, Commissioner, when I told them that you gave me a compliment on my presentation, and you also gave me an A for effort. So today, I am rooting for A for content. And I would have a jacket tonight, but, and Commissioner Gil Ziffer, you will get a kick out of this, the gentleman that bought me the jacket, his wife came out, and she saw me in the jacket. She said, Stanley, just because you gotta look like Gil Ziffer, you ain't, I mean, just because you gotta talk like Gil Ziffer, you don't have to dress like him, so she told me to lose the jacket. And I only say that in good pieces, is just because it wasn't an Urban Fit jacket, it was a very conservative jacket, not worn out in my fashion. But I wanted to say about leadership first, I want to commend you, Mr. Risco, on your path as city manager. Now, that's hard for me to do, because I'm not a very phony person. But a part of this leadership, they're teaching me to look for the greater good. And so the greater good of Tallahassee has been chosen to be placed into your hands. And so I wanted to wish you well, but I will be watching, and I will be still engaged. And I want to give you this piece of information, as we go back down memory lane to Anita Favors. I did not just start disagreeing with city people under you. I've done this for 20-some years. But Ms. Favors had a system that she did not require us to vent here. She gave us access. She made me and Dee Crumpler, y'all remember him and how we used to go at it? Made me and Dee sit down in a room, and when we came out, we had to act like, Mayor, we liked each other, because we were on the same team. I remember one time she called Tom Lewis and said, Tom, you will sit down and talk with Stanley Sims, and we're going to find out what he wants and how we can make it happen. And so I'm very pleased that I even talked with you, Scott, and I mentioned to Curtis, and you even, Miss Nancy, that I'm asking that you would afford me the opportunity to sit down and even offer you, again, my hand to shake as we move forward for Tallahassee. I've been so privileged, Mayor, to be in Orlando with other ex-felons who are doing awesome things around this state. Pastor Greg James has just opened my eyes to a plethora of things that we can do here. And I'm trying so hard for you all to see my passion and not my presence.
Excuse me, you're at three minutes.
You sure? All right, man. But I just wanted to say, I'm done? I got, you say I got 30 seconds, or I'm done?
Well, you've exceeded three, so it's up to the mayor at this point.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Sims?
I'm trying to work on. Thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker, Mayor, is Sandra Collins, then A.C. Stinson.
Hello. I come just to thank the City of Tallahassee for having a heart to handle those who have been through the domestic violence with care. I started off this journey wanting to do baby dolls. Being a victim survivor and advocate, mother, grandmother, and everything else that you can call me to be, I am. But I'm also a voice for those who have gone through domestic violence. When I started the journey years and years ago, wondering who would hear my cry? God heard it first, and He put those in my path, who will stand with me as well. And Commissioner, and Mayor, I stand before today to say thank you for your heart. Thank you for having a heart to tell the state of Florida and all those others that you are here to handle those with care, and to be a voice for those who don't have a voice, or don't have no one to have a voice. As in my journey of talking and wanting a baby doll, I shared with my boss on yesterday, my first doll in this journey campaign came from the mayor. He said to me, he didn't know nothing about buying a doll, so he went up down on aisles of Walmart, trying to figure out what kind of doll he was going to give Sandra. And what he bought me was Dora. And I often looked at the picture of my Dora doll, and you saying, thank you. And Commissioner Richardson came on board years and years ago, when he was in legislatures, when I was fighting against sexual violence, to stand with me, to have a voice, and he has not, not turned me down at any event that we have done here in the City of Tallahassee. I've even had him to do the nay-nay before.
And it was caught on Facebook.
And I thank you, I thank you for the heart, and those who have gone through abuse, thank you. So I come only to say to you, and I come to thank this city again, because after petitioning the city, we, October is Domestic Violence Awareness, as well as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but we all see all the pink, and we don't see any purple. Well, I stand before you just to thank you, because I did get approved, the City of Tallahassee has approved to light up the city hall in purple this year. And it will be done through October 8 through the 12th. Commissioner Richardson is working with me to bring an event here on that night that is going to take place, and we're talking about the ninth. But I only stand before you to say we're not going to continue to stand with the City of Tallahassee and bring every business in the City of Tallahassee to recognize domestic violence in the City of Tallahassee, so we can be the American city, that great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
I, first of all, wanted to say that I met Sandra when I was in the legislature, and she was working with then-Governor Jeb Bush, and brought this issue before the legislature. And I tell you, I have never seen a person with more passion for an issue. And of course, as she mentioned, she is a survivor of domestic violence and domestic abuse, but I've never seen anyone with so, as much passion as Sandra has shown for this issue. I mean, without fail, year after year, she's there, she's providing programs and services for individuals and families that have suffered from this horrendous act. And I just want to commend her. I'm sure that Sandra, God put that on your heart, and it shows. You just know that it's a ministry that God has put on her heart, because she has been relentless, and I think speaks for all of those who have suffered from, you know, any kind of domestic abuse. And I have certainly tried to support her in every way that I could. She's brought me on board and convinced me, you know, and it's interesting, because when I was growing up, I would see my mother and father fight, and, but we at the time, Sandra, didn't view it as abuse. But now that I look on it, that's exactly what it was, you know? And so I just, again, commend you for all that you have done, all that you are doing, and you can certainly continue to count on my support, and I'm sure I speak for my colleagues here on the Diaz as well. And, Mr. Manager, what I wanted to ask, too, and I, and you tell me how I do it appropriately, but I wanted to ask if we could, on an ongoing basis, during this time, light the city hall in purple as a show of our support for Sandra and her efforts and the recognition of domestic violence abuse in our state.
Commissioner, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
I'm going to ask Allison Ferris to help coordinate that. I know they've already been in touch, but I think that's a great thing, we'd be happy to do it, and we actually have the mechanism to do it. In the past, we used to have to use some cellophane and get really creative, but we put in some lights where we can accomplish that, and we'll be happy to do that, sir.
Okay.
That's great. Quickly, along, myself with the comments of Commissioner Richardson, and I now have three kids, and I've gotten better at shopping for dolls. So the next one will be slightly better. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Commissioners, are there other?
Yes, Mayor, there are. The next speaker would be A.C. Stinson, and then John Hedrick.
A.C. Stinson, 9089 Centerville Road. I think this is my fourth, fifth time here, I'm not sure at this point. I'm still coming to you about homeless issue that we're having at the property on 103 Cactus Drive. In my last, last time I was here, sort of got off topic a little of what I wanted to say, but earlier in the year, I told you that we were going to have a problem leasing this property because of the issues we're having at that site. We went into the fall season, we're typically always full, we had 10 vacant units out of 24. In an effort to lease, we offered no application fee, no security deposit, first month's free rent. We still couldn't lease things. Last, at the last meeting, Mr. Ziffer pointed out that there is an affordable housing issue after I sat down. I agree with that. However, the issues we're having here are not an affordable housing issue. We work with agencies in town to rent people, rent to people. Section 8 tenants don't even want to be there. We will work with them, we will put them there. At this point, we are frustrated with the situation we're in. We do believe it's a city issue, we believe it's something the city has to step in and help take care of. We had meetings there with the homeless shelter and your city staff. A lot of the issues we're having are people who are not part of the homeless shelter, they're not in that, I guess they have, I don't know if they have qualifications to be in that program. One of your staff here, Delmas Barber, has been wonderful. He contacts me weekly, he keeps me updated, he sends me pictures of things he sees at the property that are going wrong when he's there. I'm there every day, too. We always end up missing each other, I'm not sure how. But he's been great getting back with me on everything. But my issues are, it's bigger than a affordable housing issue, it's bigger than what the Kearney Center can do, there's social issues, mental health issues, and I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if the city has someone who can help us find the answer, but it's really impacting the businesses there. I've talked to other property owners, they're having the same problems. And we are still having, even though the signs are up, even though y'all have done stuff, we're still having people out there constantly. We're having crime, we're having people breaking into units and sleeping at home. I'm out there at 2 o'clock in the morning, I can't be the one policing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Hedrick. Mr. Hedrick was going to speak on 1307, was not able to be here at that point, so he will take advantage of the unagended portion.
Good evening, friends, Mr. Mayor, and keep up the good work out there, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm John Hedrick. I'm speaking, I'm at 1551 Cristobal Drive, number one. I'm speaking tonight as chair of the Democratic Environmental Caucus of Florida, but I'm also the legislative chair of the local Democratic Party, and I'll speak in that capacity for the party as well. I, we're very much appreciative of the fact you had the discussion you had when the generating comes up. By the way, on personal level, I think you might want to look at giving people the ability, right when you're talking about that item, to be able to talk about that item versus either having to speak way in advance or way after it. That might help contribute to your conversation and decision-making to do that. That's just a thought for the future, to maybe how you schedule your agenda. But back to the point here. We felt, as Paul Harvey said, here's some of the rest of the story. We've been concerned that what's been going on out there with the plan, the 100% net renewable energy by 2035 or soon thereafter is possible, has kind of been on the slow track. And it exemplifies itself, for example, the in-front contract that's supposed to be, in essence, kind of creating the plan within the plan. In other words, we've got to have a planning process to get to the plan. Well, that was supposed to have a draft by August. We're almost now to October, and we haven't seen anything. And I say all this in context, because I know you're believers in moving this forward, and I know two, at least three, of the people who are going to come after. and I know two, at least three of the people who are going to come after you are likewise, so I know this is gonna be continuity of the commission, so we, because they've said they are. So, we're just interested in trying to move this along, to get that going. And likewise, I think the city staff, see, and, and the twenty thirty-five is not just the electric utility, it's everything in the community, it's transportation, it's all energy. I mean, we've been seeing, of course, where California said, we're gonna have the whole state this way by twenty, twenty forty-five, they're a little further out. The Public Service Commission is talking about doing the whole state by twenty forty. But back to the utility, I think the city staff are very concerned that they continue to review, ensure reliability is the uppermost thing, to potentially the detriment of looking at other technologies. For example, states like in Australia, they're using a Tesla battery to, to, as backup to do an entire state. So, I know this isn't gonna be adequate time to, to have the discussion on this, but we do want you as much as possible to try and keep pushing the staff and pushing everyone to keep moving on this as quickly as possible, and that was part of the whole reason we, we were glad you had the discussion you began with, I just wanted to help continue some of this tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that is the last speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, any sharing of ideas? Oh, is that right? Uh, Pastor, were you up, were you trying to speak?
I wanted to.
Well, you, go ahead, and then, uh, we can complete a form.
Thank you so kindly, I'm gonna be brief, I wanna say, to Mr. Mayor, to the Commissioners, to everyone in respective places, I wanna put this, uh, in your mindset, uh, as the transition is about to occur, with some leaving office, some coming into office. Uh, on Saturday, this past Saturday, wasn't a very good Saturday, in light of Fabian Florida State winning, there was something else that occurred. A young man by the name of Sherrod Bryant, funeral, twenty-one years of age, was shot and killed on Thorpe Street. What happened is, he happened to be a member of my church, sad commentary that I had to eulogize him on Saturday. The other young man is still in the hospital, his wounds are undetermined. The other two that shot him, uh, they are under the age of twenty-one, so we're looking now at four families have been destroyed in a matter of moments. Why am I bringing this to you? I'm bringing this to you because the fight is still real in Griffin Heights neighborhood, it's still real, uh, to see helicopters flying over the church, looking for suspects, running back and forth. What am I asking you for? I'm asking, I am appreciative, and understand me when I say this, I'm very appreciative to, of the funds that were allocated to the Dream Center, but I, at no point want to assume that that is going to do what we need to have done. What affects my community directly affects all of our communities indirectly, so it is very important that we remember that, uh, Griffin Heights neighborhood, Greater French Town, still needs the continued help of the city, and as well as the county, and that we don't place this all at the sole defeat of the city, we place it also in the community, positive parenting, and so forth, uh, but what we're doing at the Dream Center, and this and that, I, I wanted to make this after the budget was, was, uh, passed, and then I would come back to you another time, but I wanted to say that Sherrod Bryant, his mother is still asking that universal question, why? And we'll, we'll never be able to answer that, and the best that I could do is eulogize and speak to the younger people that were there at his funeral. So I say this in closing, that I definitely need, we in Griffin Heights definitely need the continued support of this, of this body, to push forward to the things, the initiatives that we are pushing at. I am grateful about the Palmer Monroe, I'm grateful about every other entity that is out there in the City of Tallahassee, however, we have some programs that are directly in the hood, so to speak, and I say that because I'm a resident of Griffin Heights, I live on Callaway Street, and my church is on Harlem Street, which is adjacent to Alabama Street, so if you would happen to come by, you'll see the open corridor, and I don't even have to go any further about what you was, what you would see. This battle is real, this situation is paramount, and we certainly need you all to continue to push back the things that we need, and to continue to lend a hand towards what we're doing in the Griffin Heights neighborhood. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city attorneys, city managers, thank you so kindly.
Thank you, Pastor Ferguson. Thank you. Commissioners, any, uh, sharing of ideas while we have time? Commissioners of?
Just a quick comment. Is my suit baggy? Do I, am I just? I guess.
You fill it out well, brother.
No, I'm feeling pain on that one, I just, deeply, deeply.
It's been a long time since I had a baggy suit.
Commissioners, any other sharing of comments? Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Reverend Ferguson for all that he does. I mean, he, it's amazing what you do, so thank you for what you're doing, um, and it's really hard to follow you as, as we speak to little things that are on our mind. I, what I, one thing I wanted to share was this, um, we ate at The Egg, I ate with Kathy Ranch, Commissioner Ziffer said, and my aide, this week, and the egg is open right behind us, in, behind the Brogan, well, behind the Brogan, behind Clemen Plaza. It is a wonderful restaurant, and we're really lucky to have it downtown, and I just wanted to encourage anybody that's listening at this point to take a few minutes and go over there and eat. I mean, it's just, they're, you know, it's hard, they're new, they're back in the back of Clemen Plaza, it's kind of a little bit difficult to find them, and, um, so I wanted to give them a shout out, because we had great brunch, and, um, I will go there again very soon, and I hope to see everybody else there.
Thank you.
I've gone, it's great.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'd forgotten this, and it was, it was something that I heard Commissioner Richardson brought up the other day when he was on WFSU, because he was fundraising for our local public broadcasting station, and he challenged, um, everyone associated with the city and this commission to call in, and if you didn't, this Friday between seven and nine a.m. in the morning, I encourage you to call in when I'll be on the air, and I would appreciate any support you could provide for that radio station. It's an excellent news force, news service force, I know that I've gone on the air with Commissioner Miller, I've gone on the air with you, Mayor, we've enjoyed it, and, um, it is, um, it's, it's something I'd really like to do this year, and that is to beat whatever numbers Commissioner Richardson has, so please call in.
Not so shameless.
No, not at all.
Not shameless at all.
I'm not giving the number, I'm not giving the number. Seven to nine Friday.
Some other, other comments before we adjourn. Saying none, we stand adjourned, thank you.